Following the Wednesday, May 17th regular session of Dune City's order at exactly 6:00. Interim call, Jamie.
Certainly. Mayor Sheldon Meyer.
President.
Council President Susan Snow.
Here.
Councillor Melissa Stintzen.
Here.
Councillor Rory Hammond.
Here.
Councillor Richard Olson.
Here.
Councillor Robert Orr.
There.
And Councillor Mallon is absent. Excuse me.
Stand for allegiance, please.
My allegiance is to the United States of America and the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is motion to approve being conducted?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With the amendment that there is no account reconciliation or profit loss statement. So move with the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Announcements and correspondence.
The next budget committee meeting scheduled for tonight has been continued until Wednesday, May 24th, so until next Wednesday night at 6:00. I received notification today that at the Three Rivers Conference Center on June 5th, 2023, from 10:00 to noon, the Cascadia Coastal Coalition will be holding a speakers forum, including Lauren Flint to discuss digital mobile radio and search and rescue, and Della Graham from, she is an associate geologist with Haley and Aldrich in Vancouver, Washington, to discuss statewide emergency response islands determination, resilience planning for isolated populations due to widespread transportation failures following a catastrophic event. That's us, okay? We will be an island if it's a catastrophic event. So if anybody's interested in that, again, it's at the Three Rivers Conference Center in Florence on June 5th from 10:00 to noon.
Jamie Ernitz, budget committee meeting is on Wednesday, May 24th.
That's correct.
We have to have our budget in his state by June?
June 30.
30. So there's another two that we could. Thank you. Is there any citizen input on items discussed in the public hearing?
Yes. We received a septic inspection notice, and it reminded me of the past, a few years back, Dune City had a hearing on septic inspections, and I asked one of the councillors, says, if you have questions, you need to bring it to this board, so I'm bringing it to this board. During that time, a few years back, when they were having hearings, we were just on vacation property here, and we weren't here permanently. We gave some of our concerns to my father-in-law, he was not able to attend, but I have some questions now. My understanding is the inspection criteria is done every five years, is that correct?
The septic criteria is the length of time your inspector sits.
Which, who's the inspector that?
Whoever you get to come and do the inspection.
And they can?
They can take what usage you have, how many people are in your house, if you're here full-time, you're?
And then they can determine that.
And they can go as much as 12 years.
Okay.
Or 15 for some.
He needs to say his name and where he's located because people don't know.
Just because we know.
Maybe I have a pal in Snow, and I'm located in Westlake.
And a little bit more input is that we do have, in consultation with Dune City University, we have a queue that tells us how many people are living in the house, how large a septic system you have, and how much you live there, and with those kinds of.
So that's already, that's considered?
Yes, that helps us determine, or the inspectors determine when they need to check. Because it's not, it wouldn't be the same for every single house.
So it's not the same for every single house? Well, my only point is, is our home is four and a half years old, based on occupancy. It's brand new, it was tested, you know, four and a half years ago by Olean County, LA. What is the purpose of septic test four and a half years later?
If I may?
Yes.
If you would please give me a call at the office, there's a very good chance they're talking about one of your other properties. I know, it just means that they may have.
No, it's at that property, that address alone.
Well, if you would come in, we will look at the database and see which property it is, because my, I am almost certain.
Well, the other one.
You've got the wrong one.
Well, the other one, we turned in, and it was done like two years ago.
Okay, then we'll pull up and look at it. Are they just reminding you that it's coming due?
It says it's due June 5th, which would be four and a half years after occupancy.
Okay. Well, we'll have to see if.
Well, we can question that, but.
It's four and a half, it would be however many years after installation, because that's what we have to go by, is the date it was installed and finally approved.
Okay.
But come in, come on in, we'll talk about it, we'll check it out, especially on Tuesdays and Thursdays, because that is when Linda goes here, and that's her job, is septic.
Because I was just curious, like, I know we have a family member that has an old tank and a leak system, and that particular, he'd be upset with me, should probably be tested every year.
Possibly.
Versus, this is brand new, modern tech, I know if we go inspect it, it's going to be fine, it's kind of a waste of time and a waste of money.
Not necessarily.
But I'm just saying, well, we've got three septics, and just, experience enough just to be dangerous, and the one's going on 15 years, never been pumped, and we only have two people in the home, and it's maintained, you're careful, it's probably where you want it.
Right.
And they have a very good alarm system when they're out of balance.
Right, which is, which is very good, because you are particularly close to the lake, you are closer than DEQ allows with your septic system, because you're residential, they don't look at it. You can't be within 150 feet away from the lake, especially if there's impervious surfaces between.
But we make that on both properties, but, okay. Well, anyway, I was just curious, if they looked at whether it was, you know, whether floating house was changed, versus whether you're an island, or if it's a commercial property, I was concerned, what was the criteria, how you determine whether you do a septic inspection?
Commercial property has different state law, they're required to have theirs inspected annually, so we don't, we don't do that, we, that's the state, we stay out of that. We just address residential properties in the city limits.
And so like, I heard recently, there was one of the homes that had a failure, and they're required to do a retest.
In?
Like the vacation rental that had a failure?
They had to replace theirs.
Yeah, they're required then to have a retest?
Yes, and that's part of what's going to be on the duty tonight, because there's other requirements that came with it.
Well, maybe, maybe we'll come and talk, but I was going to request that we revisit it to make sure, Dune City revisited to make sure that the criteria makes sense, because it's just, yeah, four and a half years later, it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Who notified you that?
Dune City?
Oh, okay.
Now, Linda sends those out based on if they're getting close to time, and she figures they, she has to give the septic companies at least three months' notice in advance, so I don't know, I don't know whether that works out with her, if she was just bored and went ahead.
I didn't know if it was based on occupancy or whatever it was, but, all right, well, we'll come talk to you in a maybe half.
Great, thank you.
Jucker, thank you. Let's see, any more citizen input on items discussed in the public hearing?
I'm not sure what that is asking. Are we talking about 259?
No, that's a job we have to hear.
Well, the only thing I'd like to say that is not part of it is, I just wanted to say, I watched your recent meetings, and I was very saddened to learn that Joe Lane had passed away, and I just wanted to say, what a dear person he was, the Lane family was in Westlake way back then, my, our grandfathers were best friends, our fathers, and Joe was a fixture here, and shy, and kind of did his own thing, but just a really good hard, hard worker, and were really into this.
Thank you for that. Home business?
In your packets this evening as a result, we received a guidance, and this guidance is from, was this one from Georgia, or was this from DEQ's?
Just from DEQ.
Okay, this is DEQ's guidance on determining vacation rental design flow for septic systems, and these are the requirements of DEQ in the state of Oregon. Most of the businesses are already there, they know what they need to do, but this is for residential purposes, and the main thing that I want to bring to your attention, and I'm just bringing it to your attention right now, is that they are considered to be commercial properties as far as DEQ is concerned, and DEQ, they are required to have a review done to look at them, and make sure they're needing the necessary flow standards.
All right. Let me see that.
And that's not us, it's DEQ.
And, let's see, have you ever been on agreement for rolling eight hundred percent without any other?
Yes, we enter into these agreements about once every couple of years.
Exactly, three years.
I, he said that there were some changes, I have not had an opportunity to go through it thoroughly, if there was someone on the council who is familiar with contracts, would like to review it and express any concerns to me, I would very much appreciate that.
IGA stands for?
Intergovernmental Agreement. It's, would be an agreement between Dune City and Lane County.
And then IGA is ordinance number 259, and then land use codes for lands located in Dune City, first reading. Tonight we have a proposal to change some of the language of our land use codes and Title 15, Chapter 155, approved by the City Council. Planning Commission findings, a fact, and recommendations for the City Council have been included in our packets for this meeting. The review and rewriting of Chapter 155 has another consideration by the city since approximately 2008. Thousands of volunteer and staff hours have gone into discussion and debating the language, and tonight, at long last, is before the City Council for consideration. First reading. The full ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. City Council Section 34, parentheses 3, provides that both readings may be read by title only. A, if no council member present at the meeting requests it be read in full, or B, if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements for posting and advertising handed in, does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full?
I think that we read the ordinance by title only.
Thank you.
And in the backwards of motions to read by title only, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will read ordinance 259 by title only, and ordinance replaced in Chapter 155 in Title 15 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled Land Usage. Repealing ordinances numbered 182, 204, and 213, and other matters properly relating there too. Staff have all noticed requirements being met?
They have.
Councillors, have you all had opportunity to review the staff report?
Yes.
You've all had an opportunity?
Yes. Yeah, we don't hear nods.
No.
Councillors, are there any questions to staff regarding the staff report?
The only thing that wasn't clear to me is that, is staff recommending approval?
In my staff report?
Yes.
My staff report presents recommended changes, and until you.
So you, and those are the ones in your?
Right, and question, you'll know that I have questions, with notice, not necessarily. Right now, if you have not read the Planning Commission report, that is the most, because, the most important, because it sets forth all the criteria.
I didn't read all the yellow things, and I saw the comments, but I wasn't quite sure what we were saying.
Yes, thank you for the clarifying.
Are there any other questions Tuesday regarding the staff report? No, or after all questions have been answered, then say. This evening we have a public hearing on proposed ordinance 259, which proposes to amend the current language of Dune City's zoning and development code, Title 15, Chapter 155. These proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by this city and state of Oregon. This is a Type 14 budget-related procedure. Staff will identify the applicable.
Title 4. Oh, Type 4, let's go.
IV4, okay. Staff will identify the applicable substance, criteria which have been listed in the Planning Commission staff report, and findings of fact and recommendations by the Planning Commission. These are the criteria for the City Council must use in making its decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward you. These criteria are other criteria which you believe apply to the decision. Taylor to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city and parties involved an opportunity to respond to the issue, proceed in appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party interested in a land use matter may challenge the qualification, and any councillor can participate in such hearing and its decision. Such challenge must state facts relied upon by the party relating to the councillor's bias, prejudgment, conflict of interest, or other fact from which the challenging person has concluded that the councillor will not make a decision in an impartial manner. Such challenges shall be made prior to the commencement of the public hearing. I will, I will give the challenge member an opportunity to respond. Motion to accept or deny the challenge will be seconded and voted. Such challenges shall be incorporated in the record of hearing. Does any member of the public wish to challenge a councillor's impartiality?
I don't question your impartiality. I do question that some of you, some of you have thoroughly read this, I saw in the last meeting, a lot of you hadn't, and as it was mentioned by Councilman Hammond, it is a massive piece of work, and he talked about that too, and I really hope you thoroughly looked through it, because those of us who, who have, there's some really scary stuff in there, and I don't think the public has really been made abreast of that, they haven't really been informed about everything.
This is the first time this has come before the City Council.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I thought we discussed it before, but, okay.
Is that it, Jamie, in front of you?
This, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you're open to discussion.
Oh, is there anyone there who has a, wants to challenge, or wishes to challenge a councillor's impartiality? Does a councillor, does any councillor wish to declare a conflict of interest bias or ex parte contact? I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 259. It is 6:20 PM. City reporter, have you received any written testimony to read into the record?
I have.
If yes, I'd like you to read the letter to the record.
Okay, I would point out, you're only supposed to be reading the red part. Okay.
I'm not covering.
No. Next time I'll do it the other way. This is an email I received from Mark Lohman, it was dated April 12th, 2023.
Can you please repeat that, that way we can make sure we're all listening?
This one would be part of your packet, your original packet, and not the subsequent set. There were two that I got in time to put into the packet, and then the rest came in today.
Thank you.
Or yesterday, since I was not here yesterday. Everybody got it?
Nope, not yet.
We hit the very back.
I think it's Exhibit C, Bob.
Oh, here it is. Yep, thank you.
Can you help her?
Thank you.
Attention, Jamie Mills and the Dune City Council, I am writing to the council about the use of our property in Dune City. My wife and I made a decision to move to the area two years ago. She is a registered nurse and took a job at the hospital in Florence. We found some property in Dune City that we immediately fell in love with, great neighborhood and great people. We spent the first few months staying in RV sites until our deal to purchase the property was final. We began, we began cleaning up the property and making it usable, as there was a lot of brush and an old RV on the property. The property has power, a permitted septic system, and water connection. After some hard work and getting everything working, we moved our trailer onto the property so my wife had a place to stay during the week. She only works four days out of the week and then heads to our house in Astoria. We have made great improvements to the property, and all of our neighbors tell us they love what we've done. We enjoy our time that we spend here together. I travel for work and am gone most of the time, but make it a point to be here when my wife is on call at the hospital. We hope to continue living in Dune City and being a part of the community. Thank you for your efforts to make Dune City a great place. Sincerely, Mark and Angie Lohman. This one I received on Sunday, May 14th, from Dale Nichols. I am writing to support the Dune City Council's adoption of ordinance 259, an amendment to the current zoning and development code. This major revision to the current zoning and development code is the result of countless meetings of the Planning Commission, city staff, and volunteer citizen advisory committees that have taken place for over a decade. There has been ample opportunity for community participation in this process through the work on the citizen advisory committees, citizens, excuse me, citizen advisory committees. My husband has served on a number of CACs as part of this process. As a new member of the Planning Commission, I have come to understand the complexities of zoning and development in Dune City, and I have studied the proposed changes to the current code. I have also come to understand how out of date our current code is. It is important that we update the code now. In my 35-year working career as a government documents librarian in the University of California system, I worked with and helped library users wade through government codes and laws at all levels of government. Updating codes is a forever project for cities and other governing authorities, and is critical to regularly update codes and procedures to adapt to inevitable changes in our society. I urge the City Council to adopt ordinance 259. This one was also received on Monday, May 15th, from Hansford Boatman II. Please include this written testimony, and that's Hansford and Leanne Boatman. We agree with the Planning Commission and CAC members in recommending removing specific code protections for Booth Island. We disagree with the staff to further impose restrictions. In June of 2017, we purchased our property at Lot 3100 Booth Island. This property will be our home, and we can make the move to retirement. When we first looked at the property and doing our due diligence, we learned that the extra ordinances put on the island. We know how special this island is, and it is so very special to us. The restrictions, ordinances that are in place are more than we would want, but it's what was in place when we purchased the property. Reviewing ordinance 259, Chapter 155, it will further restrict our property when adding an additional 50 feet on top of the 50 feet already in place. We would feel the squeeze on three sides. That is a lot of property to be taken from the landowners. We would not be able to build in the way we had envisioned when the property was purchased. We purchased our property in part to enjoy the views for our home. This again would be taken from us. Similar lots that are not very deep, without a question, would not be buildable and basically worthless. We would not only be losing our ability to build, as most others have built on the island or around the lake, but also what we have invested monetarily. If passed, how would the new 100-foot riparian buffer affect being able to provide a safe defensible barrier from fire and falling trees? How would the 100-foot riparian buffer be applied to homes already on the island? Should they be required to now respect the new standards and allow nature to regrow in areas that would now fall into a no-touch area and a tree-retention section? We also question what the benefit of further restrictions would actually be, given how many houses are already built and will not be able to comply. This one is dated May 10th, but we didn't receive it until May 15th. Dear City Council, as a member of the Dune City Planning Commission since January 2016, I have been very involved in the updating of Chapter 155 on the Dune City Land Usage Code. During this time, I worked with many different people on the thorough review of the code. Every word was read aloud. Our goal was to make the code sensible, objective, and clearly stated. While we did not agree on everything, we were able to come to consensus and produce a document that balances private property rights with the natural beauty and resources of Dune City. I urge you to read the document and improve it. Thank you. Ken, as now. This one was received May 17th. Dear Dune City Council, the Dune City May 17th, 2023 council meeting includes the first reading of ordinance 259. The reading is a meeting action item and precedes a public meeting regarding ordinance 259. I am formally requesting that this first reading of ordinance number 259 be tabled until a separate public hearing is scheduled and held. It is my understanding that today's version of ordinance number 259 is a revision of ordinance number 259 as proposed for, as proposed for adoption in 2021. The 2021 version of ordinance number 259 had serious flaws and made sweeping changes to city code. It included, it included new policies regarding zoning, multifamily housing, water, trailers, and more, and featured concerning additions to codes related to fees, fines, land seizure, and removal of judicial recourse. These changes were listed under Code 155.1.4. It has been stated that some of these problems have been addressed, however, the community has not had an opportunity to discuss them. It's critical that citizens understand the new 2023 version of the ordinance and have an opportunity to share their opinions regarding its content and adoption prior to the council voting. Conducting the first reading of such an important ordinance prior to holding a public hearing diminishes citizens' ability to participate. Ordinance number 259 is a formal legal update of the Dune City. Ordinance number 259 is a formal legal update of the Dune City Charter. Its adoption would reduce citizens' ability to impact city government via citywide vote and end citizens' access to a municipal judge. Future modifications of ordinance number 259 would be limited to individual sections and subsections of the ordinances. Challenges to sections of the ordinance would require the intervention of a regional court. This, of course, would be lengthy and expensive procedure for citizens as well as the city. It is vital that a separate public hearing is held in order to address these issues. Respectfully, Geneva Jackson. This one is an email on Wednesday, today, received today. Dear Dune City Council, I am a Dune City property owner. In reading the agenda for the May 17th meeting, it is clear to me that your intent is to read the ordinance twice as required, allow some version of public comment, and potentially vote on it before the meeting ends. This seems to be putting the cart before the horse. I have a number of questions that I would like to have answered before you read it a second time. You mentioned in the past meeting that you worked to address public concerns. Is there a complete list or a document somewhere of these citizens' concerns that came up two years ago when you attempted to vote on ordinance 259? Is there a... Two, is there a document that identifies which one of these citizen concerns have been addressed in any revisions that have been made in the most current version of ordinance 259? For example, I continue to have concerns regarding the notification process under enforcement. The current document reads 155.4.200B, "An error in the name and address of the property owner or person responsible will not void the notice of violation." And 155.4.210G, "An error in the name and address of the property owner or person responsible for failure to receive the notice of cost will not void the assessment, and it will remain a valid lien against the property." Notices should be going to the addresses on file with the county assessor's office. Your process to mail notices via certified mail is reasonable. I can't envision the scenario where you would have the wrong address or name on file. If for some reason that were to happen, why would the homeowner be accountable for that mistake? I don't believe this is legal. Why would the notice be considered valid? How would it be reasonable for the notice of cost assessed and any related liens to be sent to any random address or named party and be considered valid? If that rare event were to occur, Dune City should be accountable to provide the homeowner with additional time to respond. Anything else would be an unfair burden to the homeowner who can only respond to notices that they actually receive. This example is one. I am confident other citizens would like to see where their concerns ended up being addressed in the newest revised document. You need to review the changes, if any, the changes were made before a second reading. I have reviewed the document online and do not see change dates listed, so it is difficult to tell if any changes were made. I am officially requesting that this letter be read into the public record under public comments on ordinance 259. I will review the video of the meeting once it is available, after the close of the meeting. I anticipate you will have answers. If not, I will follow up with public records requests for these documents. I assume they are easy for you to produce. They would be very helpful for the public to review to have clarity on what changes have been made, not made, and are the explanations as to why the city chose one option or another in their final version of the ordinance. Sincerely, Holly Collins. Also received today. Hello, I would like to make a few suggestions to improve Chapter 155 revised version known as ordinance number 259. Each suggestion is intended to be considered independently and are not interrelated. I have spent considerable hours reviewing all the current and updated language on the open space overlay Zone 155.2.3. I intend on building a boat dock, so for the last year have been reviewing the process for placement of a new boat dock. All removal and fill permitting and permitting to install the floating boat dock is permitted through Department of State Lands, which is abbreviated as DSL. DSL does respect and wish for Dune City to certify that the building plans are in accordance with Dune City's master plan and local regulations, but the permitting is through DSL. DSL have their own regulations and suggested best practices when constructing a modern boat dock. In short, they have adopted the most restrictive standards put out by the Department of Fish and Wildlife and try to steer the majority of future construction to follow those standards in order to minimize private development impeding the general public from using the open space, i.e. the water. The proposed revisions of Chapter 155 are less restrictive than the Fish and Wildlife guidelines, but there is one subject the Fish and Wildlife Guidelines addresses that Dune City is silent on. That is the subject of a dock serving adjacent properties. Department of Fish and Wildlife states, "The size of the dock can be 6 feet by 48 feet with a maximum 288 square feet total area if serving two or more adjacent properties." In the spirit of Dune City Code not being more restrictive than the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Guidelines, I propose the following sentence be added to the end of 155.2.3.110, Section B, Number 2, Line B. A boat dock that serves two adjacent properties shall not exceed 400 square feet in area. This proposed change is on page 68 of 259. That is not on your page 68, that's a different page in there. And he references the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Residential Dock Guidelines from February 2016. This suggestion relates to access and circulation in 155.3.1, Section J, Number 4, addresses when nonconforming accesses should be brought into compliance with city code. This is clear and a good suggestion, but below in Section K, Number 1, Line E, it addresses the same standards for easements, but does not address easements that are not up to standards. I propose the following sentence be added on this line. Existing nonconforming access easements shall be brought into conformance with expanded or redeveloped more than 75% of the current zoning standards. This proposed change would be on 95, which I'd have to find for you. And that was sincerely Jonathan Anderson. And the last one I received, Dear Dune City Councilors, Mayor Meyer and Administrator Mills. My name is Jeanne Jackson, and my family and I live just west of your city hall on Hemlock Street in Westlake. While I am grateful of your April 21st notification, that is, your desire to go ahead with the adoption of ordinance number 259 again regarding Chapter 155, zoning and development, entitled 15 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances, by deleting outdated regulations, reorganizing and expanding language for clarity and adding new provisions. It also still really concerns us all. We have asked, time and time again, to be kept informed of any further discussions on these subjects, but apparently we are not until now. Neither the Dune City Planning Commission or the city council have reached out to us for any further discussions of these matters, as requested of both Jamie and Lonnie. We have not attended meetings in the past year largely due to concerns over the continued pandemic, the death of Mayor Forsythe of COVID-related pneumonia in early 2022, and the fears of catching COVID from some of your unmasked council members. I have no computer, but you certainly have my telephone number and address, and are well aware of our interest in the development of these policies. The last city council meeting I attended was back in January of 2022, in which I presented a letter which can be reviewed, applying to these matters. Despite your denials, this ordinance could certainly prove costly to many of our residents. It is unclear what we have to gain as a community from the adoption of ordinance number 259 or enforcement of Section 155.1.4 in comparison to the risks associated with pushing forward such poorly-written and confusing documents with such sweeping changes to our individual land use and property expenses. If you really want citizen input, it's time you communicated more transparently with our residents about what you're doing up at Dune City Hall, and let us have a voice in our community as well. Matters as important as these should require a vote from us all, not just a handful of pro-city councilors in search of funds. Sincerely concerned, Jeanne Jackson. And those are all the written ones that I received by 3 o'clock today.
Sheldon, I do see that some people have joined, so I will attempt to get them.
You want to take those first and then do the ones here?
Yes.
But you need to read what's next. Because I reply to... Do they want to hear the staff report, or you want to hear them report now?
Sheldon, will you please refer on the report on the document?
Let's go ahead and take their...
Okay.
But they're not written. And you don't let the others talk until later. No, they can't talk until the public hearing.
Okay.
These were the ones that provided written comments.
Okay.
So you've provided us a report on the documents before us tonight.
Okay. The amended ordinance 259, or the original is amended by the Planning Commission. Those amendments show up in either red-stricken language or in blue for new language. For after I have reviewed it, except for those sections that are highlighted, the numbers are highlighted, I had it in turquoise, but you couldn't read the letters, you know, after I made the copies. So I made a copy, so I went back in and changed my turquoise to yellow. So the amendments I have made are in that. One of the things I will point out for sure, well, the best thing to do, as far as I'm concerned for you to do, but you guys do it however you want to do it, is to flip through and where you may have comments or questions, ask those for questions, but that'll be later, after everybody is...
Okay. So we're now at a point where we will take testimony from all those who wish to testify and debate.
Before we get started, can I read to you the criteria? So we can put in the record the criteria you are required to follow. And this comes from the Planning Commission staff report. The proposed amendment is a legislative amendment to the Dune City Code, and the following criteria apply to this matter. Dune City Code of Ordinances, Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 155, Zoning and Development, Section 155.4, Applications and Review Procedures, Subsection 155.4.1.7, Type 4 Procedure Legislative. Dune City Comprehensive Plan Elements, Citizen Involvement, Land Use, and Air-Land and Water Quality. Oregon Revised Statutes, ORS 197.610, Local Government Notice of Proposed Amendment or New Regulation, Exceptions, Report to Commission, ORS 227.186, Notice to Property Owners of Hearing on Certain Zone Change, Form of Notice, Exceptions, Reimbursement of Cost, and Statewide Planning Goals. The Planning Commission staff report contains detailed findings addressing each of these applicable criteria in the above listed documents. In the findings of the staff report, do you want to read the findings of the Planning Commission staff?
The recommendation?
No, well, the consistency and all that stuff, the criteria.
Well, it's 17 pages.
Can we... I'd rather hear the testimonies than read 17 pages.
Read 17 pages around what it says.
I would like to make a motion that we read this later. It's more important that we hear what everybody says.
If that's a question, I'll second it.
All those here?
Aye.
That is in your packet, so you have the opportunity to review it. The thing to remember is when testimony is given, they can only talk to the provisions, the criteria. That is applicable.
Did they have this criteria given out to them?
No.
Yes, it is on the website.
Yeah, it's been on the website for a month or two.
Maybe you should have mailed that to everybody.
It was on the...
The first mailing cost us $1,000. We don't have that much money.
It was on the public notice, and it is on the website.
Do you want us to read the 17 pages of criteria, or would you rather get testimony?
Well, we don't have computers, so I agree that it should have been mailed, because that's not fair to anyone who doesn't own a computer, right?
The 17 pages to which they're referring were part of the Planning Commission's two public hearings in 2021. So they have been on the website for over a year. There are copies here, the notice says there are copies here if anybody wants to read them here, or we will copy them for anybody at the city's cost.
Thank you. We have a motion to hear, and is there a second to...
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we... So we will now take testimony for those who wish to testify. Could it just be in favor of...
Just a second, let me find it.
On page 3.
In favor is first.
And then it would be another one for...
Yes.
In opposition, so anyone who would like to speak in favor of...
If we're proposing changes, are we in favor or opposition?
Pick one.
Oh, okay. I'm happy to talk. I'm Jonathan Anderson.
Don't wait, wait a minute, he's got to take over.
I'm sorry. I thought you said people in favor.
And what do I need to do?
You're calling those individuals, and I want them to be in favor.
Oh, yeah, this is all who want to testify in favor.
And that's the list that I gave you.
This one?
Yes.
Rapunzel.
Well, some people weren't sure, so.
Good evening, councilors. Laidings Rapunzel, I'm a member of the current Dune City Planning Commission and also a Dune City resident. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I did submit a written testimony and recommendation of approval for ordinance 259 and the changes. In that, I called out two specific changes that were made by the Planning Commission following their public hearing in 2021. I believe they are now incorporated into your redline versions of the language for Chapter 155. Just to be short, one of them was to reinsert the protections for Booth Island with modifications so that, in general, the smaller portions of the Hideaway Island addition are not affected by the 100-foot setbacks, for example. The other addition that was made to the language was to modify the approval process and... was to modify the approval process and authority to give the Planning Commission 60 days rather than 30 days to make recommendations on these types of type 4 processes, so that there's plenty of time for the public input and comments to be received. So, again, the Planning Commission is recommending approval of the changes. And so on behalf of the Planning Commission, the 18 or so planning commissioners who have been involved in this process, the 12 or so citizen advisory committee members, three or four city attorneys, three or four city planners from ElCog, consider recommendations, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm assuming that's the only one who wants to speak in favor.
There may be more, some people were not sure, so...
So the second sheet then is...
Just follow them.
Just...
Got a point of order right quick. Hi, my name's Tom Plakem. I've met Jamie, I know she's the administrator. I'm new here, new a year ago. And I, this lady said she's on the Planning Commission. I assume you were the Planning Commission. Can you give me a little breakdown of... This is my first time ever to anything like this.
This is the city council and the mayor.
Okay, and the mayor, and then you also have a planning commission.
Correct.
Helen Snow, you've done your thing. Melanie?
No, that was just attendance.
What?
That's just the attendance roster.
That's okay, just keep going. If you don't want to speak, you can just say pass.
Okay, Robert Berry?
He may have left.
Yes, I'm on...
Okay, Jeff Peterson?
My name is Jeff Peterson, and I'm a resident of West Lake or Dune City, I'm not sure. And I live on Booth Island, I'm a full-time resident there. And I bought, I bought a home and three parcels in 2013, so I've now been on Booth Island for 10 years. I'm essentially full-time, and we love it there. And I'd like to thank the members of Planning Commission for all their effort in putting this ordinance together. And I'd like to thank you for your time this evening. I have some points of confusion. I can't say that I'm for or against this proposal because I'm confused about a couple of things. In particular, in regards to Booth Island, there are some ordinances that are specific to Booth Island and protections for Booth Island. And early on, a proposal was made that those protections be removed. Today, Jamie sent me the most recent copy of ordinance 259, which still included, which still included the deletion of those ordinances. When I walked into the meeting, she handed me some new language, which apparently are reinstatements of those ordinances and contains some different language. I would like to, one, just make sure that that's correct, because there has been some confusion over this whole issue. And I just want to make absolutely certain that those ordinances are going to be reinstated. I currently own, I currently own about 49% of Booth Island. And I wish I would have bought a little more, and then I could be emperor. And we wouldn't have to do this at all. I would just, I would make my own proclamations, and that's where we would be. Anyway, I believe that this is what Jamie handed me today, is the revised language for the existing provisions that are specific to Booth Island. And I understand part of the confusion was that Hideaway Island was a development that I believe was done maybe in the '70s, and it's not fair to impose certain ordinances to those properties. I mean, they have some grandfathering rights. But I still have some confusion over some of these issues. The first, the first item that I'm looking at here, and it says, "Low-intensity uses such as hiking, walking, observation, and other similar uses are allowed."
Excuse me?
Let me point out that Booth Island in its entirety is private. There are no, there is not one square inch of Booth Island that is public property. So to state low-intensity uses such as hiking, walking, observation, and other similar uses are allowed...
Page 78.
I can't see that that even belongs there. I'm reading page 79 of 268.
Thank you.
It says, "Final, final Dune City Code, Chapter 155 revisions." And it says that I'm on page 79, 268. At the top of the page, it says 155.2.4, Fragile Lands Overlay Zone. Anyway, that's my first point. It doesn't seem to me that that's appropriate and doesn't really belong there at all to describe or prescribe that these, that these uses, low-intensity uses such as hiking, walking, observation, and other similar uses are allowed. Well, like I said, the entire island is private property. The second thing that I'm confused about as I read this is what the setback requirement actually is, and whether it is, whether it's 50 feet or 100 feet. I'm very, I'm very confused by that issue. Let me read a couple of things to you here. I'm on page 80 of 268. And on, oh, "The first 50 feet perpendicular to the shoreline from water to upland shall be a no-touch zone with no disturbance of vegetation, no building, and recreational activities. The only exception of this no-touch zone shall be dock specified below in section Q for water access for boats and passive recreational activities." That's fine. So it says, "First 50 feet shall be a no-touch zone." I got that. Then, when I look at R, it says, "Only one residential structure and one accessory or facility structure of 500 square feet or less will be allowed per lot between 50 to 100 feet of the OHW." I'm not familiar with what OHW is.
Ordinary High Water Line.
So...
Ordinary High Water Lines.
I appreciate you clarifying that for me, Jamie. So the way I read that is that I can build something in this zone that's between 50 and 100 feet. Unless I'm totally messed up here, that's what I understand that to read. "One residential structure and one accessory or facility structure of 500 square feet or less," so that just means the facility structure has to be 500 feet or less, "will be allowed per lot between 50 to 100 feet." So that means I can build within 50 to 100 feet.
What, where are you reading that?
I'm reading that on page 80 of 268. Fragile Lands Overlay Zone. Sentence R.
Now that's weird.
Well, it's the first 50 feet, and the other one is between 50 and 100.
Well, it says that I can build between 50 and 100 feet.
Yeah, he's right.
I understand that I can't build between the first, the first 50 feet, that's quite clear. But this says that I can build between 50 and 100 feet of the water line. And there's another reference that says that I cannot build within 100 feet. And Mr. Boatman referenced that in his letter to the council today, that he was concerned that he can't build within this 100-foot zone. So I just, anyway.
Yes.
I'm confused about whether it is 50 feet or it's 100 feet, or what is it? What is it? And back to this letter from Mr. Boatman. By the way, there are no homes, there are no homes on Booth Island, perhaps with the exception of Hideaway, that are within 100 feet of the water line. So he, I don't know what he's talking about, but there are no homes at all that are within that 100-foot zone. So it just, I feel that that needs some clarification. Is it, is it no-building zone, is it 50 feet from the water or is it 100 feet from the water? Which is it? Other than that, all looks great.
Well, those will be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention, I appreciate it.
Don Anderson?
Pass.
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 John Ridge?
Pass.
First question?
Yep. Good evening. I'm new to the city, so I've had a couple of questions. I live on Dune Bay Lane. So in the first paragraph, 155.11, it says that this is to protect the visual character of the city and the health, welfare, and safety of the residents. The health, welfare, and safety, I totally get. What is the definition of the visual character of the city? How are we defining that? If that's going to drive how we build things and use our land, I think that should be defined.
I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat that for me?
Right, it's in the very first paragraph. I get it, it's kind of just an overarching paragraph, it's not code. But it says, "The six divisions of the code are used together to govern land use, review land use applications, and protect the visual character of the city and the health, welfare, and safety of its residents."
Page 2, 268.
Just would like to clear that before we start stamping that as an official thing. And it kind of leads me to my next point, is the accessory building. It says, "Accessory buildings shall be constructed from the same material, style, and design of the primary residence." So if I have a stick-built structure, I can't build a steel garage like a shop? Additionally, you know, say I have hardywood siding on my house, my shop would have to have hardywood siding even if it's not available? Maybe the color changes?
Good question.
So, third point, which all leads to that. "In the event of extenuating circumstances, what is the appeal and approval process?"
I think that's asking for variance.
Never done this before, so if that's already defined, that's my bad.
There is an appeal process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the appeals process is located under chapter 36 in the Dune City Code. For comments, we, it would go to first Northwest Code Professionals, that's our higher permitting. And if that was not an issue that they addressed, then it would come to the city council.
Okay, so I'll just bring it to you guys here in this forum?
Yeah, if they haven't addressed it in this.
Okay. Those are my only two points. Just, you want to get some clarification on some things?
You're going to have to, I couldn't write that fast, so, and I don't know which sections they are, but I made little notes about what they were...
You want them to hear now, we can talk about it after.
228 inside, I forgot.
What is the new word?
The, page 2, 268, it talks about the visual characteristics. And then I can't remember where it was where it talked about similar housing, but I saw it too. So, structure.
What version? That's page 52.
52.
Paragraph 155, 21, 210.
21. What?
210.
210. And that's the color of mine, kind of thing?
Yeah, so that specifically talked about accessory structures. That's the one that stood out to me. I'm not sure if there's other similar things that talk about characteristics. I totally get, again, safety, all that's important. But if we're driving cosmetic things, I think it needs to be defined.
There are, there is another appeal process, but that's where decisions are made by a building inspector that are discretionary, and you disagree with those decisions. That becomes a part of the land, it's not the Land Use Board of Appeals, but the Land Advisory Committee, and it entails, it's a brand-new thing that was just set up. The city council acts as an appeals board, but it includes a bunch of other people, like the building inspector here, the building inspector from a different county, somebody from the county building department. And I don't think it includes anybody in the state, but we have to report to the state.
But again, beyond safety, the decision for the appeal would be based on if you agree with my cosmetic choices?
I agree with you. We were trying desperately to get the cosmetic choices out, unless there is something peculiar, historic value in that kind of thing.
Of course.
It's probably just one of those that we missed.
Okay.
So what was it?
Thank you for telling.
Because I couldn't find it. It was too fast.
Can I ask a question? Can you, I looked on the page that you said, and neither one of us can find what you're talking about. Can you tell us the...
Yeah, can I come up and show you what I'm looking at?
I'm wondering if he's... Just cite the number.
I'm looking at the blue and red line for changes.
Just cite the number where you're talking about, instead of page, where...
So the very first change, it talks about the visual characteristics.
Yeah, I got that one.
Okay.
We're on the second one.
Do you test your structures? It's 155 dot 2 dot 1, 210. It was previously 220, and it was marked out as 210 now?
It's a residential.
Again, 52 in my printout, page 52.
Not 52 on ours, so that's why.
Page 56.
All right, that's why the number is good.
Okay.
We're going another page, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
First question?
Yep.
It's page...
That was him.
It was page 56.
I'm done, I just want to keep going.
Jonathan Anderson?
That's me. So I did send the email, and you guys have sort of already heard my email. It came because I wanted to add a little more detail. But essentially, my main comment on the first proposal was the concept of us bringing the open space overlay zone standards for docks and building up to code. And I think a lot of this language is really good. Going through the process, reading all the rules, not just Dune Cities, but multiple other organizations, it's a process. But again, the general concept is, unless you go through the even more complex process to try and get around the Fish and Wildlife Guidelines, that's probably the most restrictive of any rules in Oregon on the subject of boat docks. And I understand some of the intent behind it. But they did at least make a comment that if you have multiple properties sharing a dock, they went from a 6-foot-by-24-foot dock to a 6-foot-by-48-foot dock, essentially taking their square footage of 144 feet, square feet up to 288. And so as I read through all these proposed changes, again, we may get tied up on page numbers, because for me, it's page 68, but it's in section 155, 2 dot 3, the open space overlay zone. And if you get into standards, which is relabeled B, and then placement's number 1, and then size is number 2. And that size...
Page 72.
Start from 72.
Bottom 72.
Continuing on to the next page, yes, the number, or the letter B, it states, "Boat dock shall not exceed 200 square feet in area." And then gangways won't be included in that, and what have you. In my opinion, I think it would be appropriate to add on one more sentence to say if a boat dock is shared with multiple properties, that maximum square footage would go up from 200 to 400. You're still dealing, you know, we're still dealing with the Fish and Wildlife Guidelines of capping it at 280. So I just picked doubling it from what you guys have stated code, because that's essentially what the, what the Fish and Wildlife Guidelines stated. If anyone has an opinion that shouldn't be 400 square feet, they prefer 300, in my opinion, then at least our code wouldn't require people to come and go through a more long, lumbered process in applications. But that was my whole intent from that one specific suggestion. And my other proposal, my second thought, had to do with the access and circulation section. And so... And so, this is 155.3.1. This document, it's pages 94 and 95, I probably a few pages past that from you guys.
37.
Yes. And so, where it says, "Shared driveways," and then it goes, that's the letter I, the number is 1, 2, and then J, you've got street access. There's some added language there, numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, under street access. And on number four, that additional statement talks about, essentially, if there's a non-conforming property that is over five acres, that would create here for additional expansion, that the access should be brought into confirmation with the current code when it's developed at least 75% or greater. But yet, if you scroll down one more page to the standards, you've got standards, number one, standards, and you've got A through E. And that letter D, it comments on if any lot or parcel that shares a driveway and meets requirements for further division and exceeds five acres, the driveway shall have an easement of at least 50 feet. And I thought to myself, it would be ideal to have a process also, like that other statement, for easements that are not non-conforming with the new stated regulations. I thought this should at least address the process of bringing easements that are non-conforming with this new state, this new regulation into compliance. Conflicts of interest are that I own land that literally falls in this category. And what I've come to learn is if this proposed legislation was in, was active and in use for previous decades, I wouldn't even be here talking to you about this subject, because it would have solved that problem originally.
Thank you. Tom Claycomb?
I don't know enough to even know what questions to ask or whatever. I would like to say more on a personal level, and I've only been here a year, I knew nobody when I came here, and my goal was to get to know as many people as I could. So I planned a party at my house, a beautiful musical event. I've got, this was originally planned for March, but we had to postpone until July 22nd. Please put that on your calendar. Jamie knows about this, and anything, I'd like to invite all the planning commission, all of you, I'm inviting people who have done work on my property, plumbers, electricians and so forth, to thank them for what they've done, and I acknowledge them. All the people on my street, Ford Way, some of the people did not get the message that it had been postponed. Four couples came to my house. Anyway, we had one of the nicest parties. None of these people knew each other, their neighbors have been here five, 13 years, thanking Tom Claycomb, you've been here less than a year, and you're getting the neighbors to know each other. And that's, that's my goal for that. And by the way, the man who's coming is a piano player, and he has three women that play with him, and he grew up on Ford Way. And his mother, can't think of his name right now, was a mayor of Dune City at one time. Sonica, yeah, his name is Charles Sonica.
No, it's a name, the fact that they were missing an A in Wy. On your street. W Y, or W Y.
Other sign heading back to Ford, Ford Way.
We'll have to get that fixed, won't we?
It is.
Be sure to tell the City Council about that. Be sure to tell the City Council about that, so they can fix it.
Okay.
And at your party, you might be surprised, because a lot of us are bipolar. You'll be getting two for one.
Okay.
This, this is recorded, so you might get all of Dune City over there.
Well, I, I'm hoping for at least 100 people. I've got several thousand dollars already invested in this. Musicians and everybody already paid.
I would point out that if you're expecting more than 25 guests, you have to get a permit for Dune City, for a special event.
Well, I, I, I asked you about that before, and you didn't tell me that, but see, that's why.
Well, that's because I didn't expect you to have that many people.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll come get that for you.
Has been recorded to be only two of us can show up at a time, you know?
So you don't have, don't want a quorum?
Correct.
You have to put public notice out.
All right, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
John DeBreez?
No comment.
Tina? DeBreez?
It's not a comment on this specifically, but I know you said you had everything available for people, like, like one person said it appeared all of you hadn't read it in its entirety. And I was unable to get the whole thing, but what we did read, it's a lot of very legal jargon. And what I would have appreciated getting mailed is what are the major changes that we that live in Dune City need to be aware of? You know, that's all I care about, what are the big changes? And I mean, I'm sure you could have done that in three or four pages, and it wouldn't have cost thousands of dollars. And we would all be informed and be able to ask pertinent questions.
Thank you.
And, you know, I mean, I'm not uneducated, I went to college, I taught school, but still, I'm not a lawyer. And it's pretty legal. And like I said, a lot of, it's appeared some of you haven't read it in its entirety. And I could be wrong, but if I am, I'm sorry. But it's very hard for us laypeople to wade all the way through it. And the only thing that most of us probably were concerned about are one of the big changes. Are you changing zoning? Are you changing requirements? I know you talked about the riparian area, but what other changes have you made that are big-picture changes that could affect us directly?
Your comments? Councillors, do you have any specific questions for a person who testified?
I, I have one for Jeff. Jeff, where, what, I, I haven't been able to read all through all what Booth Island is. Is it 50, 50-foot setback right now?
Well, again, it's, it's not very clear to me, Rich, whether it is 50 or it's 100. Clearly, you're not supposed to disturb vegetation within 50 feet, there's no question about that. You're not supposed to disturb native vegetation within 50 feet. At the shoreline, we have heron just outside, pardon me, just outside our kitchen window, down on the shoreline, we have a beaver den, the, the native habitat there. We have, we saw mink last year for the first time, so we have mink there. We've watched three generations of deer grow up, so we have a herd of deer, and we've, we've seen three generations grow up, so there are a lot of, a lot of native animals. And this states very clearly and very specifically that there's a 50-foot no-disturb zone. But my question is, is, is how close to the shoreline can you build? The one sentence says that I could build between 50 and 100 feet. There's another sentence here that says that there's a 100-foot riparian buffer zone. So I'm just not, not clear whether it's 50 feet or 100 feet, that's all.
Clarification on that.
The, that's the new language. The old language says 50 feet, no touch, 100 feet. 100 feet, nothing less than three feet. So you can't.
So the new language is stating that we should be 100.
Yes, there is an error in that new language.
And, and that would make that island basically non-millable, if you took 100 feet from both sides of it.
Well.
That's not true.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's.
Not necessarily.
So can, can you clarify then? Because I thought I saw somewhere in here where it said 50 feet was being amended to 100 feet. Can you just, can you just tell us what the language should, should say?
Originally, what the planning commission had come up with was to make it all the same. Right now, for everybody in Dune City, it's a 25-foot setback, no-touch zone, and another 25 feet for a total of 50, nothing shorter than three feet. And then, if you want to build something that's beyond that, it's more than that 50 feet. And so originally, the planning commission said, well, let's just have Booth Island be the same as everybody else and do away with the Booth Island code. But the Booth Island people came and testified and said they did not want it to be like everybody else, because it's a special place, we want to leave it at 50 feet and 100 feet. The problem is, in the, in the paragraph that he's talking about, it looks like there was a meshing of two sentences that maybe should not have been meshed. And so that whole end of that sentence probably does not belong. I'd have to go back and check it and see. But the way I read it right now, it makes absolutely no sense to say, yeah, build your house between 50 and 100 feet from the lake, you know?
Yeah, from what I, what I read from, from Boatman's statement, they would like to build, but I thought that there, they said that 100 feet would be too restrictive and more restrictive than it currently is, so.
Well, the question is, the point that is, is vital in all of this, there are two subdivisions on Booth Island. One is one with the larger parcels, and one is Hideaway Island that was created, quite frankly, it was the very first subdivision ever created in Dune City. And those lots are stamp size. It was supposed to be like a camping place. You go, you take your camping, you know, your, well, you couldn't get your trailer, well, you could, but it'd be very difficult to get your trailer over there. And so those lots are smaller. Well, Hideaway Island is not subject to Booth Island things. Hideaway Island is accepted out of that. And that is the thing that we're not remembering at this point, that, and that Hideaway Island can, has to comply with Dune City Code, but not with the Booth Island Code. The Booth Island Code does not affect Hideaway Island.
Do we have any testimony from Zoom people or the?
Oh, that's a good question. Do we have anybody that wants to?
This person has been raising their hand, but.
Okay, but you can't figure out how to do it?
Well, this doesn't seem to, I don't think they're still there. Yep, they're still there.
Can you text them and ask them if they have something to?
Is the speaker on?
There he is, yep.
Do we have a speaker on that TV?
Yes.
But it'll be on the, on the computer, not the TV?
Yeah, this might get really loud.
It won't be on the TV, no.
Needing to be, to let recording this, to prevent those public hearingers following is, is therein, they don't, they have a microphone, they can team up too. So, five of you guys?
E L, are you there?
The person with the initials E L with your hand raised, is your microphone unmuted?
Yes, I have my hand raised, but your microphone hasn't been working, so I haven't heard anything this whole half hour.
Would you please state your name?
My name is Christine, I'm with Frank Shayla, TS8.
She can't hear.
But I can't hear you very well, I'm with speaker.
It's because of the delay. Does she have any testimony, because we can hear her?
There is a delay. Do you have any testimony that you want to present?
No, I raised my hand because I was trying to view your live feed, and your microphone was off, so I couldn't hear anything.
Our microphone is on, so I believe it.
No, she's talking about on, online, but it should be.
I was more concerned if she had testimony.
Okay, well, you said, you said the microphone's on now?
It has been on.
She said it's been, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. JV, the person with the initials JV?
He's got his muted.
Christine's last name?
Didn't mute it.
Can you tell us your name for the record, please?
He's gone.
Okay, didn't want to do that. And LA?
No, it's going to be this one.
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was just listening in, I'm a resident, but I didn't have anything to say. It's working for me.
Thank you, John.
Yes, thanks.
Any other input from there?
Well, let me see.
Wait a minute, we got one more.
Lori Anderson.
LA, yeah, I've got things I've got to talk about.
Lori Anderson is your name.
Lori?
It's Lonnie.
I'm just listening in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I would like to go through the, the, with my recommended changes to the planning commission language. And you will need to discuss on some of these things and make a decision before you move forward.
Did Sheldon close the door, please?
What?
Did Sheldon close the door, please?
No, it's probably.
Okay, okay.
So I'm not sure what you're saying, you know?
I want to go through page, not page by page, because I didn't make changes on everything. But there are some where I made comments. And so if you could flip through and go through and look at the comments and clarify for me the answers to those.
This is your exhibit A?
No, so two, and when you go through the?
As you go through page by page through 200 and 68.
There's 268 pages, and she has, I don't know how many comments in there, yeah.
There are couples to the side, to the right-hand column.
Tell us what page wants to go to, Jamie, because I have comments I'm going to give.
Oh, well, I think that's a better way to go. And go until the cloud, the, the sky goes down. Is that okay with you, Sheldon? Councillor Snow has, she has comments she wants to make, so she'd like to go basically page by?
I said by, I.
By mine?
Well, I have other ones too, but if you want us to go to your comments, just tell us what page you want to go to.
Yes, I will, as soon as I get to one.
Do you have any guesses of how many pages in your comment chart?
No, I don't, not very many. It really isn't very many.
I don't know, there's a lot of blue markings in here.
What she's talking about is the comments off to the side on the right-hand.
Yeah, on the right, they're in this gray area over here on the side.
The yellow highlighted.
And if it says highlighted, you know, those are just little pages, the little tiny ones, like on that first page or second page, wherever it was. You know, that was just a clarification on the committees, I mean, the, the, of hearings.
I think the first actual comment is, so page 39.
So when I look at your script here, page four, it says, if the hearing is not, are we now in discussion with staff to report that that was public input?
Yeah, I know, we're fine. We could have gone through it earlier.
Yeah.
Excuse me, did I miss that people who wanted to speak in names were called? Because I remember you said people.
Everybody spoke.
Everyone's been called, because I had.
She's asking about testimony from those who are opposed.
I would like to go through this first, so that maybe it'll put some of these questions at ease. I'm finding, trying to find the first one.
Page 13.
13.
13.
This is an old version. Why does it have the blue on?
So it's, uh, 155 dot one dot three hundred definitions.
The driveway apron.
It's a whole.
It's hard to see.
Yeah.
It is.
They had stricken that.
But it's turquoise.
And I would like to see it added back in, because if you don't have a driveway apron, it tear, when you come onto the roadway, it tears up our road. And so the driveway apron helps reduce the amount of maintenance we have to have on the road.
And the next one, page 39?
Should, Jamie, should we be?
Seven, oh no. No, fine. Should we, you be what?
Should you, we be acting on each of these as we go through it? Was that your intent?
What? What?
Should we be acting on each of these as we go through?
You could, because it is required if you're not going to adopt the entire document. But let's wait until we get through it and see how bad it is.
Okay.
Little ones, you've seen those in here, the little ones are just little yellow.
Page 39.
Page 39?
Can we read, can you read yet, Susan?
Oh, yeah, I just passed one, mine will be separate. We'll go through here. On page 29 of 268, just for your information, I took those definitions and put them into definitions at the front. They were just moved into the definitions at the front.
So, you crossed them out and moved them over?
Right.
Got it. 29, you moved those where?
To definitions.
Into definitions.
These are definitions, which you moved them forward. So, I've got to find somewhere else earlier.
Those would then be around page 10.
Right, up at the very front, that's the first chapter, or the first point, something. So, they're all in it. I'm trying to keep them all in the same place and alphabetical.
The next comment is on page 39.
They're close, 39, I think.
Yeah.
So, did we want to go back to page 17, where I see there's some other highlighted form added, but it's back to page 29?
Well, most of the time, it's just little stuff. On 17, it is a definition of local street, which was a definition that was somewhere else that I moved up here. I was trying to get all the definitions in the same place, because it makes it much easier for people to use the code if they say, "Oh, yeah, I don't know what that means, let me go read what it means."
Okay, I'm sorry, Jamie, I'm confused, because it looks like we're in the definitions section and...
Well, we are, but they're supposed to be alphabetical.
Oh, and they're not? Oh, maybe. Okay.
That's all that was, that's why I wasn't really worried about it. I'll just put the definitions in definitions, alphabetical.
Okay. Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you.
Jamie, we're in definitions, can I bring, you have one place in here, I don't know where it is, that you made a comment about accessway?
Yes.
And there's no accessway definition. There's access definition, but no accessway. So, we either have to use that to access...
Yeah, we have to do that.
Or you have to put in an accessway.
Let me make a note of that, you don't know where it is, right?
No, I made a note where, we'll come across it, some of your notes to the side, and I made a comment on it, so I look back to try to find it.
But it was in a definition, and it should be in the front. I may not have caught all of them. I thought, I'm at 39 right now with regard to code violations. Because we have an entire chapter in our code that addresses violations, and we have several sections that address violations that are building codes related, as in violations for permits, violations of that kind of thing, our attorney does not believe it's necessary to put this in here. So, I am proposing that it all be stricken. Except, we do, will need to have a paragraph that says, in accordance with the provisions of chapter 36 of the Dune City Code. Because you've got to tell them there it is somewhere.
So, this will be rewritten with specifics to Dune City Code violations?
Now, it will refer...
To?
To the Dune City Code violations provision, right.
The next one's on 45.
You also added the word ephemeral.
Oh, I did add the word ephemeral.
On page 27.
Which you guys probably should talk about. Ephemeral, if you don't know, means it runs only when it's raining, kind of thing. And currently, our code says that you cannot build within, you know, it's the same thing, the 25 feet, no touchdown, 50 feet, no shorter than three feet, so you've got a 50-foot away from everything, including ephemeral streams, which is good if that stream is a pathway to a lake. If that stream is a pathway that ends in somebody's backyard, you know, maybe we don't care. I don't know. So, I put that in there to trigger a discussion on whether you want those provisions to apply to ephemeral drainages as well. Ephemeral drainage are not protected by DEQ or anybody else for that matter.
It scares the crap out of me to have that in there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't like it. That's just my opinion, so. Because it rains, and I've had pasture land that had problems with wetlands, because water and paths get marked, and water goes through, and the animals knock it down and things, and it's just a nightmare.
I agree with you, I'm understanding what you're saying, except for, from my past experience with wetlands, is some of them, even ephemeral ones, can be very important to birds and other wildlife. So, I'm not sure which way to go on that. I hear you, but I also know that they can be significant.
Agreed.
Which leaves us...
You have to make a decision, I'm sorry, guys.
When we're on that page...
What page is that?
27.
Thank you.
My comment on there is the riparian corridor, and it has the riparian overlay zone, and those are sometimes used interchangeably. Are they the same, or should we have riparian overlay zone in the definitions?
They are defined in their areas, because they're more than just a one or two sentence definition. There's entire description of what constitutes a riparian, and there's maps.
Well, yeah, I read this whole thing, but it seems that it goes back and forth, and it would be nice if it could be standardized in some way to not confuse people.
And we're already on page 37 and 268.
Yes.
Before we had us go back to 27.
I did, because, anyway, I'm sorry, I tried to...
So, I will leave that on council.
Okay, the riparian corridor is what is, the state uses. The riparian and riparian area is what we use, based on our definition.
So, what my problem with this is that we have the Planning Commission do all the blue stuff, and then we have these other things that we added, that I don't know if the Planning Commission's reviewed and did the recommendation, because this is the staff report, I don't know if there was any mesh to it. So, I have a feeling, I feel like we're redoing what the Planning Commission did without them...
Right, we really don't need to be doing what the Planning Commission did.
Well, I mean, we should be, we should be approving this, having it done. I was hoping the staff and the Planning Commission would have been the key, would, would have came to us from the staff report, unless they agreed with the, you know, we worked it out. And we'd be, we'd be in the same, because I thought, when I first read this, the main purpose of this is to fix unclear things because of all the changes and apps of consistency. And we, we were, if I was working on the Planning Commission recommendations, it would be blue, right? But we now have yellow, which, and I hope that the Planning Commission agrees. They said they wanted us to prove it, but approve what we have and do that, because I'd like to get it done, because I don't want to go through eight and a half years and still not have this done.
Exactly.
So, what are you recommending?
Well, I was hoping, I was hoping the staff report was in agreement with the Planning Commission instead of not being.
Well, some of it couldn't be, because some of it violates state law now. There's been changes over the last 10 years. With regard to the wordsmithing, though, which is what we're talking about doing, we really need to avoid it. There's a reason, it has been wordsmithed to death. That's why it took so long.
Right.
Riparian is a definition of riparian. Riparian area is a certain specific area. Riparian corridor is an area that is the corridor around all riparian areas.
Oh, I know, I can use the definition. All I'm saying is, for the definition of corridor, you say, see definition of riparian overlay zone.
And it's not there, yeah, very close, right? Yeah, there.
Okay, I'll look at that and talk to Rapunzel, make sure I get it right. Right, thanks. That's why I was skipping all that stuff, unless there was something...
I got it, I got it, I got it. So, we're at?
Page 39.
Urban growth boundary, just on page 31, just to let you know, they had recommended all the removal, the removal of everything on urban growth boundary. When we get later on, you'll see they have recommended removal of all that, and we can't. We have to leave it in, state law requires it. So, I had to put those back in. When's the next one, 50-something?
Now, I have a comment on 45.
It suddenly changes color for me, I don't know why.
Well, there's a big one on 39, but they said the attorney said that this intersection can be...
Yeah, we covered that one.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to David everybody.
Okay, what's the question for you? That I couldn't renumber?
No, I was just pointing out was the next comment, the area.
Oh, thank you.
In case anybody...
That's just a renumbering.
That's renumbering.
Yeah.
The next one I saw was 52.
47.
There was some more before that.
And then 147 again. It was something that was, the urban growth boundaries required.
A long time before we're urban.
Getting closer every day. That one I was off in la-la land, apparently. But for those, I mean, it would be good.
So, which one, which of one of these are you talking about, Jamie?
It was about the agricultural activities. All of our, yeah, the ducks and geese and stuff like that. Anytime we restrict that, which we do, and a lot of people don't realize that they even exist with restrictions, I didn't know if maybe you wanted to raise the number from 14 chickens and ducks and other similar small animals.
Well, I have at least many times 20 ducks in my yard.
But you're like, turn on a cake.
I know, I know.
So, it's your house they go to next, okay. So, if you think 14th grade, that's fine, I just wanted you to talk about it. And accessory buildings. Accessory buildings are the bane of your code enforcement officer. And I thought there were going to be people to testify about that tonight.
Pump houses, boat houses?
51.
What's the definition of accessory building? Pump houses, boat houses?
A structure that is accessory.
Yeah, accessory buildings and then accessory dwelling, that's why you have two different definitions on those.
You're talking about accessory dwelling or accessory...
I'm talking about accessory dwellings. I shouldn't be talking about accessory.
Mother-in-law house?
No, it's accessory buildings.
This says accessory buildings, but I'm talking about accessory houses.
That's in a different place.
You gotta have a house before you have an accessory building.
Yeah, you do have to have a house before you have an accessory building.
And the accessory buildings could be a shed, a barn, a shop.
Right, and I'm asking, because I get it every day, why doesn't Dune City allow accessory dwellings? And I give them the spiel on the septic, and, but if the lot is big enough to accommodate two, why can't they do it? Or if the state approves their septic for two houses, why can't they do it? And I run into that every single day. So, I'm asking you to confirm that you do not want accessory dwellings in Dune City.
This is talking about the building?
I know, I get a bit tired of thought. Thank you.
I just want to make sure.
So, that you're saying, so that if we don't want accessory buildings, unless...
Not buildings, dwellings.
Oh, dwellings, so you...
Yeah, not here in the code, but there are other places in the code, for example, in the definitions.
What about people who are grandfathered? That's where this is really confusing.
There's...
Lots of people have had them for years, long before, you know, anybody had even heard of them.
If there's not a permit, then there's not, it's not approved, because Dune City has never allowed accessory dwellings.
Well, Lane County allows mother-in-law houses, I'm surprised.
If it's in Lane County, not if it's within the city limits.
Isn't the distinction...
You're trying to say you're not Lane County.
Well, Lane County, we don't have to comply, we are, as a city, we are able to adopt our own regulations, and our regulations, because our septic systems drain into our drinking water, or you can't have two on one lot.
Or DEQ doesn't allow it now anyways.
Who doesn't?
DEQ.
Well, yeah, and DEQ doesn't now allow it.
I think you're offending a lot of people who lived here for decades, long before any of you ever came to town, by telling us all the life we've always lived is no longer possible. You're going to start finding us and making us...
I'm sorry, when you lived here, there were probably only about 50 or 75 people here. We have 1,400 now, and they're all pooping, and it's all going in the lake.
But you don't protect about those of us who actually let you use this building and invited you here to have a better environment. You don't care about Westlake, Old Town, West Lake, Ursula.
I am only worried about drinking water sources.
But you've never provided them. That was Dune City's promise to the people of Westlake, that if we signed on, there would be good city water. That was a promise you never kept. You also said you'd never take the Westlake name away. You took our sign down, you tried to take our post office over. People don't trust you. That's why they don't want to volunteer. They don't want to work for someone who's been so deceptive to all of us and unkind. Really, that's wrong. Anybody else...
I appreciate you saying me, because I have lived here.
I said, Dune City has made these changes. I didn't say you. I never said you.
You said you.
Well, I was speaking, Dune City has an...
Yeah, let's get back on topic. The question is, though, does the city want to allow accessory dwellings?
So, the only scenario, I'm not sure if this applies, that's why I'm going to say this, is I buy a lot, and I put a garage up so I can keep my motorhome in or my travel trailer while I build the house.
That's an accessory building.
Yeah, it's an accessory building, so I, in which, should we, should we allow that while we build a house or not? Because that's really the question, right?
No, the question is, you already have a house, you want to build another one.
Okay, I got it.
For somebody else to live in.
So, we should be changing this from the last to dwellings?
No, 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 no. Right now, this provision you're looking at is building. Let's just leave it at that and move on.
Okay.
Okay? And to answer Rory's question, yes, if you have approved plans and you've been issued a permit to build, then you can go ahead and put your accessory building to store your tools or materials, whatever.
Some of those accessory buildings have apartments in them.
And that's where we run into the rub.
Yeah.
And that's where I get injured.
There's a distinction between an accessory building and an accessory dwelling.
Basically, what we're saying here is, we don't want to allow any accessory buildings to be built on a piece of property if there's not a house to be adjoining to it.
Well, that's correct.
Right.
Then, we're telling people that you can't come in and buy a half-acre piece of property and build a storage facility to house your equipment or XYZ, and you cannot use your property how you see fit. I mean, if I wanted to buy a piece of property, because my existing property won't accommodate my lawn mowers and tractors and all this other stuff, and I want to buy a piece of property to build a shop on, to be able to put that in, we're telling them that they can't do that?
You would be required to put a covenant on there that says that both properties have to be sold together. You would be required to put a covenant on there that says that both properties have to be sold together.
See, this again, that last part.
So what about, there's two... I got, I got questions and concerns with that myself.
There, there's two properties in Westlake that are just basically garages with apartment-type things in them, and that's all they are. Are they considered a dwelling, or are they considered a accessory?
Depends on if they have a kitchen. Now how am I supposed to find that out?
Inspection. I, I can understand not allowing a livable dwelling in there, but...
Yes, I, I know we have all kinds of problems with that in the past, but...
I do, I do think of four buildings right now that are on parcels that have, that are strictly garages, shops.
I have a stack of files this high in my office of complaints against people doing this, living in garages, living in, you know, basements of somebody's house and renting them out. I need help. I need some guidance from you guys in the code to tell me how to deal with these things.
And I don't think we want to have a community full of properties that have just barns or shops on. I mean, Rich, I understand what you're saying, but it sounds like there is a way that you could do this as an, instead of you attach property.
Oh, so you want to, you want to attach a piece of property three miles away from this existing piece of property, and they have to be sold together?
Oh, I thought you were talking about a piece right next to your home.
There is not one there, so we have to buy a distance away.
It's not worded that way.
No, you're right.
Am I correct?
So like, it's like would the, the one on the wire have to be sold with the moving unit?
That's what, that's what she stated?
Well, yeah, I, I, I...
I don't like the rules, that's a state law.
I take, I take note to the letter that we had earlier from the planning personnel that said that we discussed and fought over every line out loud, and we're doing it again now. And I would like to be in the position where we approve the planning commission's report. If it needs to go back to the planning commission for them to, to do the wordsmithing, I would rather do that than instead of litigate it here. That's, that's my opinion, because I know...
You have to tell them what to, what to change, though.
Yeah, I know, well, and they made changes based on the last public hearing. I, I don't know, I certainly like to hear what Rapunzel has to say about that. But, because I, I mean, I saw, I, some of these things I don't agree with or do agree with, and so if they're just code changes to make it clear what we already have, and then if we have specific issues, maybe then that's when we do the amendments. Because we gotta get this thing done sometime, because we can do this for... If, if, it's my feeling right now, there's like two things that I don't like. I don't, not, I want, I wouldn't change it, I would probably go and ask for an ordinance change later. Because this thing has to, because this has two-hundred-and-sixty-eight pages. I did the flesh readings, I don't have the flesh reading, Kincaid flesh reading thing. I have something called that, that does the LIX on it, and the LIX number for this was sixty-eight. And it said anything over forty-five you should be worried about. So this, you have to be a Philadelphia lawyer to read this, which is what I took, I heard that. And I agreed with the testimony that said that if, if we had a seventeen-page report that said this is what we're changing, they'd probably be happy with it, pretty good with it. And I, I kind of, I know that we have to slip these things in because time's changing. But the reason why some of these yellow things got in here is because since the last public hearing, there's been months going by, was it a year? When was the last time the planning commission met?
November of 2021 was the continuation of the planning commission public hearing.
So we're not getting anything done, and it changes and it's a moving target. I, I really, I really want to get this codified in, as a provision. If there's only two or three provisions, that's a problem, and instead of fighting over it, let's change it later. And that's my opinion, you can have yours, I got it. I, wordsmithing is one thing, but the, the sensibility of accessory buildings, how they should be defined or not defined, I think that's already been litigated in the, from the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah, that's... And my opinion, my opinion is that there's been a, a whole lot of expert advice and counsel to put this whole thing together, and I think it's probably as good as it's gonna get. And if we need to change a bit or a piece somewhere down the road, because it really doesn't work, that's the way to fix it rather than to sit here for the next six weeks, going page by page and trying to decide that every single word here belongs here. I do think they belong here.
Move on, page fifty-three. There was new language provided to do it, because I saw things in here that I have questions on, and... Page fifty-three, that one is new, paragraph H. That was a discussion that we had earlier regarding a, our code that, a proposed ordinance that you voted down because it was too specific. And so that's why this is in there. If you don't like it, take it out.
Is there any time for another question or two before we finish?
This is not the time for comments, that was closed.
Not a comment, just a question.
No, he has not closed the public hearing.
Oh, you have not closed it, so it's still open.
Yeah, I thought I did.
No.
That's why I asked about four earlier, page four.
No, I don't think it has been closed.
So if you guys have read it, just leave it up to the council to ask the questions.
So I guess what she's saying, so if you have some questions, I hope either fifty, or twenty, or thirty, or five, or two, or one?
Well, we're going through Jamie's, so now...
I think she just pictured it, that's what she said. If we read it, do we have any questions?
Are you talking to me now?
No, I was talking, I wasn't talking.
Page fifty-three, did you...
Fifty-three, Jamie, you're talking about H?
Yes.
Okay, I will just say that seems like a reasonable addition to me. But, or, or, I mean, I, I think we need to hear what Jamie has, has said in these pages. And I think what I'm hearing some of the others say is we should adopt it, and then the back can make changes if needed.
I, I did read the comments, I did, some of the comments that I read, I wasn't, I didn't obviously understand everything. I also read the staff report that she sent out, and that's where I came to my conclusions about that, and I, and I, that's, yeah. And I want, I was more important, I heard what she had, it was more important me to hear what the public had to say about things. And I'm sure that some of the, I, one fellow had read real well compared to, and had different thoughts about what I thought, and which is good. All right, council, what are we gonna do?
I'm on page fifty-seven.
Okay.
We're talking about accessory buildings. Our current code said the accessory buildings can be built before the residence provided there was a structural permit issued. People began taking advantage of that and canceling their structural permits after their accessory building was built, and having to get refunds of several thousand dollars that was causing havoc. So that is, I think, why this is more strict now, because it would be after the certificate of occupancy is issued. But that doesn't solve the problem, that they want to live on the property while they're building their house.
Restore their equipment while they're building their house, so people don't steal it. It's like you can't get a dock on Booth Island without having a building permit. So how are you supposed to get your boat to... How are you supposed to moor your boat to work on the property to get that accomplished? It's the same damn thing. I'm, I'm sorry, I completely disagree with those.
You can have a dock built as long as you have a building permit.
But if you're not, if you don't want to spend the thousands of dollars and it takes you five years, your building permit's done in a hundred and eighty days, is it?
As long as there's, as long as there's progress, that can be extended. So it just requires a, a site plan and building plans to be approved, that, okay, this is what they're planning to do, and then they can get the dock.
And so how much is that gonna cost? I mean, some people can't afford to do that and let that money sit there for however long, but...
You guys are the council, so...
I, I can, I can bring that up at a later time.
I appreciate the effort of the planning commission on this, because waiting until CFO is issued is a long time, but it doesn't solve the problem that we have. Because it, we tell them, no, they're just gonna do it anyway, so...
Well, I, I think it's a reasonable thing to do. I, I do, I was looking at the place off of Clear Lake that's in County, and I saw that they paid twelve thousand dollars in development costs and this and fee, and they put an extension, moved away because they don't have something to build. So I understand those things about costs and things, but I see why we need it, I don't have... It's tough, we have lots of expenses, it's hard to build. But I stayed at your, I stayed on your property when I, for my accessory building where we live, in my place, so...
Well, your point, Jamie, here is, is I think, well-taken, and I believe that... Rich, am I understanding correctly that you are agreeing with Jamie that this is more restrictive in the wording that's been put in here than it should be? That's what I would...
All I'm saying is, is I don't believe that we should hold people to the, the bottom line that you cannot have an accessory building on a piece of property that you buy just because you don't want to have a house on that property. And if you have a house that's three miles away, you have to attach that property, and they both have to be sold at the same time. I think we're, I think we're limiting to people to, um, telling them what they can and cannot do with the properties, too, too much. I, I don't think you should have to attach a prop, a piece of property three miles away to your property just to build a, a building on it to be able to store stuff in. Now, I mean, I understand that you don't want houses or apartments and all that stuff being cropped up in there, but...
It's an issue.
I think we're kind of overstepping our bounds a little bit, just my opinion.
May I ask a question?
May I ask your question?
Well, we didn't have a question.
Is a, I mean, is a boat dock an accessory building?
No.
Boathouse is, right?
Boathouse.
I don't know why, is it?
It's not.
No, you said it after half a second.
A boathouse would be an accessory building, but the dock is not a building.
Because I, I still don't understand the criteria of needing to have a residential home built before building a boat dock. And I'm not trying to be controversial.
It doesn't have to be built, it just has to be a plan.
Have your building plans done?
Under current code...
That's the same argument as I think.
And so would this accessory building language change that? Or would it still be with this new adoption? Oh, you can still build a dock as long as there's an approval of building a home? Because this will change this.
Yeah, so this would change it.
This would change it also for a boat dock?
This would say that, that you have to actually have a certificate of occupancy.
So then we're saying a dock is an accessory building?
It's not.
Certificate of occupancy before boat dock makes no sense.
Just, just saying.
It was, is actually, it was the boathouse.
Yeah, I don't think a dock is an accessory building, so it doesn't apply here.
It's the boathouse.
Yeah, it's a boathouse. We keep saying that. Dock is obviously not a building. Right.
So then maybe...
Why do we keep being saying that?
Even after this is all adopted, you still could build a boat dock without building a home?
Yes, that's one, that's one understanding.
And current code, and these revisions say that as long as you have approved plans and a building permit, doesn't mean you have to have the thing built.
All right, moving along.
Okay, Jamie, what's next?
Well, that doesn't solve that problem.
Put a tab on that one.
I added language on page fifty-eight because DEQ does now require the, um, septic reviews on a guest house or a bed and bath, uh, bed and breakfast. So I added that in.
Good.
Page sixty-two. Short-term vacation rentals excluding those renting individual rooms within an otherwise owner-occupied residential structure. I added under permitted, or actually allowed uses in the commercial zone. But if you don't want to, that's fine. The DEQ has stated according to their OAR, the regulations, that anytime anybody rents a structure for money, it is a commercial property, as far as they're concerned.
So how is that gonna affect existing?
There is a rezone, I would imagine.
You're referring to like Airbnb?
So that means...
Well, they've adopted it in nineteen ninety-one, so we'd have to look at nineteen ninety-one forward, that's when it was adopted.
So they would have to come in and apply to change the zone of their property to continue doing an Airbnb? Am I summarizing that correctly?
Sure, from my, that's what I would agree to.
So basically, any of the existing Airbnbs would then become non-existent until they could come in and apply for a change of zone?
Right, correct. And that would, their permit would expire in, on the second year, we've still got another year to go, before they...
So how much does it cost an individual to apply for a zoning change?
It's in the resolution chapter.
We didn't do it.
So you, you would contend on having commercial next to residential, then next to commercial next to residential on the way?
The DEQ language says commercial use, so...
So we're still just talking about septic, we're not talking about rezoning of the property?
Yes, that's my understanding.
The wording needs to be a lot more clear. I agree with you all that let's clean up the language before we pass anything. You can't pass something you don't understand what it is, and we certainly don't understand.
Well, the question before the council is, do you want to ignore the DEQ? Because apparently we have been since nineteen ninety.
Haven't bought it so far. No, I would say we should not be talking.
I think a recent septic failure kind of raised the flag to them.
I'm sorry?
A recent, a recent septic failure of a property that is being used as a vacation rental raised the flag with Lane County, who then contacted the DEQ. And we also had to ask what, you know, what do we do as a city, so...
I would think that the DEQ would be looking at Dune City more stringently now. See, is that they have got one red flag.
I have a question of Rapunzel. At one point, the planning commission had adopted, actually adopted, changed... At one point, the planning commission had adopted, actually adopted, changing the eight feet to 10 feet?
They discussed it.
No, they actually adopted, they took a vote, I was here, you weren't here that night. And that's why I was surprised to see it back at eight feet.
It's eight feet. That is what was adopted.
Okay.
So they talked about it, and they may have changed their minds later. It is eight feet.
Jamie, what were you referring to?
No, I was on page 73.
That's the access water?
Sorry, I meant to ask you that the other day.
So now that you're on 73, and we have the... We have a lot of existing docks that seem to have more than 200 square feet. So if somebody wants a dock larger than 200 square feet, is that a variance that they have to apply for?
It's not up to us, it's up to the state regulations. Department of State lands.
So if it's up to, why, why do we have, why do we have a square foot there?
I'll, I'll tell you that DSL doesn't, um, they don't, they don't enforce the fish and wildlife restrictions on current docks that are going through repairs. It's new docks where it gets a lot more strict. And that's why I've been reading so much.
So you're saying versus the pre-existing?
Yeah, docks that are already there that are much bigger, they're not, they're not going to suddenly make you shop off a bunch. But, but if you have to, and I think it's in here somewhere too. If it's more than 75% of the dock is being modified or something, then, then the standard, new standards do come in and apply, but I, I, that's my understanding.
The next is the Booth Island Code.
Page 72.
And there was that one change.
Then what's the page number?
78. That's where it starts.
What page?
Page 11, Jamie, we're on page 78.
Well, I had come to, actually, page 80 is the one where paragraph R under two, it's not worded correctly. It does actually say you can, you're allowed to build between the 50 to 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark if it's 500 square feet or less. Does that sound right? Sorry, if it's 500 square feet or less?
I, I have to, if you look under definitions for ordinary high watermark, I, I saw that too. There was something with the definitions that had a problem.
Yes.
Did you see that? Did you fix it?
Oh, no, I know there is. The ordinary high watermark is defined only by FEMA. And there's a process, you have to go to, to, to get it defined. And the city has not gone through it, they just decided that's what it would be.
Well, I know that you have 12 feet in Silco's, I'm trying to find that because that's a...
Yes, it's, it is.
And if you look at that part there.
So you're saying that ordinary high watermark is 12 feet according to the measurements here on the lake?
Well, you look at, it's 34. Yeah, I gotta find the exact wording because I do have a question for it, and it's not 22, it's under...
The ordinary high watermark. I know, and it was.
Well, that basically puts it on, puts a whole lake front in my part.
Let me find it, I, I like, okay, yeah, it's page 22. And if you look at, this is ordinary, it has the low watermark at 12 feet for Silco's Lake. And then it says for Silco's Lake, the high watermark is 56, 56 feet. Is that what I'm saying? I think you meant to put 5...
I think 6 is right.
OLW, OLW, ordinary low watermark, it shows 56.
No, it's 5.
Or is it 56?
It's 5.
It's 6.
It was 6.
You say have parentheses 56 after.
Costs us the 6, the word, the number 6, it's very...
That's my, I said, okay, yeah. It's my, I said.
Nobody's on the same page.
Yeah, well, you were talking about...
22.
Yeah, I was going back there to see the...
And the definitions on page 22 that refer to the ordinary high water and the ordinary low water definitions.
And that was applied here where we were talking, and so I went back, I wanted to make sure the numbers are right. Did you ask about that?
And if you, to change those, and I'm with you, Rick, it's, the operation of the dam does not allow it anymore. I don't know when this was written, but the operation of the dam does not allow it.
You got to be completely off, I mean, that's got to be looked at because the dam operation wouldn't allow that.
Okay, well, we'll leave it for now, and I'll put it, we'll put that on the to-do list. Okay, so I know that paragraph R is wrong, and it needs to have correction on page 8. Excessive slopes, I just want to, it's on page 81. I want to point out that my, our engineer says that most cities put it at 15 because it reduces the workload and the expense of sending the engineer out to examine it if you have it at 12. And we had ours at 12. And he said 12 is usually acceptable. It's at 16 that it becomes a problem. So I put in here that 12 to 16% will be subject to city engineer review. And then greater of 16 requires an engineer's report. However, our code does say that greater than 15% requires an erosion and sediment control plan from the city. So I put it in this year so that they would be reminded that they need to do that too.
And that's building of any kind?
That's where slopes are greater than 15 or 16%.
Any development.
Of any form of development.
Right. Some of these yellow things aren't mine.
Very colorful.
I am on 87.
Okay.
Page what?
She's on 87.
87. And if you look at 86, we're in the section that says allowed activities within wetland protection areas. According to DEQ and DSL, installations of park facilities by the city, including bicycle and hiking trails and interpretive trails are allowable in the wetlands areas. So I put that in there, thankfully. Their regulations say that. They give the cities a buy on that. Because they know we're going to get the wetland delineation and do it with the least harm.
So is it DEQ that regulates wetlands?
No, it's, it's DEQ and Division of State laws. And when you have endangered species like we do, there's a whole bunch of other people to get involved.
But both of those are in agreement?
Yes. Okay, you voted to take a thermal out, so... I mean, you haven't voted yet, but you said you want...
Huh? We didn't vote.
No, you didn't vote on that?
No, and we have, we have some...
And there was only discussion on it?
Yes, just discussion.
Okay, well, page 90 has the same question.
Yes.
Okay, Sam with 92, you've already talked about it. I'm on page 101. The provisions of I-1. The language is just going to say shared driveways are allowed when the next section says that you can only have four tack slots on shared driveways. And my thought was for clarification and that maybe we put that same language up here in the first, that first paragraph so that they know, yes, they're allowed, but you can't have more than four.
So what about existing places?
What?
What about existing roadways which have more than four?
You can't enforce code. New code against existing. That's why on 182, we've been trying to say that if, that's, we take it back to that date because that was the original code, if it was original language.
Yes, I, I think that, I think that...
Well, the court will determine it at that point, I guarantee it.
These two should be in agreement, these two sections?
Well, that's what I think. I think if someone's just reading it, oh, look, I can have a shared driveway, I can put 15, you know, no. It's limited to four.
Was that number chosen by new city or are there other laws that...
I have no idea, do you know? Rapunzel, where the history of that came from?
No, I don't.
I don't either? I guess beyond that becomes a subdivision. And that may be stayed long.
Yeah, I think you're right, huh?
Okay, on page 102. The state no longer requires grading and exclamation marks. And yet we still have one. So we moved hours over into our public works permits. So I wasn't sure whether, you know, that, if you wanted to do away with it like the state did, or if you want to keep.
Well...
And I just wanted to point that out to you. On page 102, where the comment is?
Yeah. I mean, to me, this goes, maybe I'm wrong, but this seems to me to go back to the fact that we do drain into bodies of water. So personally, I would think that we would not want to follow the DEQ because we are so water-abundant here. Protection of water seems rough to me.
And so when, this is what I should have said to you in the beginning. When we get to the end of this, you will be asked to vote either on every separate thing or on it as a whole as it was presented. So I think we're just going to have to do separate and live to table it and do it another night.
I think so. That would be, that would be my sense of it. And I was, I was going to suggest that anyway because there'd been a lot of discussion, we heard from the public, we've heard from you, we've talked about ourselves. I, I would certainly personally not recommend trying to approve this in the same act that we've had all this discussion.
I would agree with you on that. I have a question on this, though, in regards to the driveways. We're asking for a driveway bib. How is that going to apply into this standard's 12-foot running surface to prevent drainage into the waterways?
If what our driveway permit asks us for is, under certain circumstances, is an onsite. And so we send our, our public works guy who's familiar with that sort of thing over to look at it to make a determination of the best way to handle the drainage.
Okay, thank you.
That's an in-house policy and procedure.
Sometimes the city runs drain into the property, not property draining to the rain.
To be perfectly honest, you are not supposed to allow your water to leave your property, which would mean our lakes would dry up before you know it, but...
But you worry about water leaving the property to do the city. How about doing city's water coming to your property?
I know, and that is the big concern.
And we're all affected by the dam, which makes it really complicated.
Yeah. Okay. Did you discuss that one?
Who makes this progress right now?
We are lying!
Yeah, we can't find a compound to...
What page are you on, so I'm not too far ahead?
I'm looking, uh...
What did you get to? Oh, wait a minute, 115?
Oh, no, 115.
Yeah?
Yeah, 115. There is a... Okay, I, the note I put on here, and it was just a note that came to me as I was, I was reviewing this, is to need to discuss the removal of this section because it might be important. And this is the section that talks about allowing a developer to use a performance bond to guarantee certain, the actions get taken. And there were all kinds of little things that went with it. But usually, we have a performance agreement that goes with it. So the agreement would, general, would overrule, as I'm thinking about it, the agreement would be the binding thing. And so maybe this language just saying that we can do it, the city can do this, is all we need. We don't need the terms in it. Because they've got, it used to have condition before it was going to be allowed.
Okay, so the section you're, you're talking about here is, is what, what was four is now three? Or that's where, and it starts with, the city may accept a future improvement guarantee?
Right.
And it's all of this language crossed out and you're talking about, right?
Right, and so, yeah, I know it was, I needed to check and make sure that there's not something important that we need to leave.
Okay.
And I don't think there is, but I kind of run it by legal counsel yet.
Okay.
Okay, now, I know it's probably not important now, but we're on page 117. Public facility standards, this would not impact our current streets, but would impact new development if you wanted to make the roads wider to include sidewalks. This is where you would do it. And that's up to you, but now's the time, that's what you want to do.
So is, so is this, help me out a little bit. Your comment says this is where the width of streets can be expanded to equip parking under sidewalks. And what, so something has been taken out with regard to that?
No, 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 no. It's just, this is what our widths have always been set at.
Oh, okay.
And we're running, as we're running out, we're running into more and more problems with people parking on the street. Because of our widths, you can't get around them, fire trucks can't get there. And so this would be where you would say, okay, in the future... And so this would be where you would say, okay, in the future, all new subdivisions would have these other requirements. So that, this is where you would do that.
Okay.
If you want to.
122, are you that far yet?
We're on 120, I've got one here.
I'm, I'm trying to count pages of return.
I didn't... I don't know why that's there. I have to understand it, it's like 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, I hadn't eaten yet, I am diabetic, you know what that does to your brain?
I do understand that.
I know you do.
As a nurse, I do understand.
So are you, are you looking at 120 or did you go past that?
I'm on 122 now.
Well, I have, I have a question for that.
That is just off the top of my head, so if you don't want to take it out.
Well, additionally, such underground facilities shall provide enough surplus lines so to protect against breaking to buy a 20-foot shift of ground. Is that, that's what you're asking?
Well, you go to these classes and they tell you, you need to be changing your codes so that you can protect your people against damage and indirectly. And they make some recommendations. Matter of fact, in Japan, you're, you should see their codes. And one of them was this, so that the electrical lines don't break, but they're not doing it everywhere else.
Well, I, I can understand overhead lines and things, but very stuff, I don't know how you make a loop, but it's tensile strength.
All you do is have to do it like this, back and forth.
I, I, I've never seen them put them back and forth, it's always...
No, I know, they've always done that, that's what I mean, it's a change.
I would recommend putting that out, actually, we have major earthquake, because I, I know what the, that would be hard to do to, for cable.
It's hard enough to run the cable through straight ones.
Yeah, that's right.
Roger, what are your suggestions?
Well...
Just take it out.
When you, when you feed a electrical line through conduit, it's difficult enough to get it through a straight one. You do that to it, it's like...
Good point.
Yeah, if, if the cable locates, if you're trying to cable locate something like this...
It'd be better if they, they do put slack on the end of both of them, just have a power wire on the end.
It, that's if you use a pipe. But many buried drops aren't conduit and even certain power lines aren't conduit, they're actually, yeah.
I was just trying to figure out something.
Yeah, no, I don't, I...
I mean, that's what, that's what propane is doing now, but they're, they have flexible line.
Correct.
That they use, so.
Well, yeah.
But you have to ask for it, they won't do it automatically.
Cables that I know of are flexible, they go back and forth, but they're, because they're not rigid, but I don't know how, yeah.
You, you, it, it, it makes sense to think about that though, because you could have some real luck with it in a city.
Yes, expected is 10 feet down and 10 feet west.
Yeah, see, underground utilities aren't, you know, this might be referring to electrical power, I would probably defer to the utility company that's responsible for it.
Okay, with the addition of 20 feet and, and how many feet?
Yeah.
A mile?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever. Like, that's all you need, is 20 extra feet.
I, I still, I still...
But it's not, it's not defined in here as to, you want an extra 20 feet, how an hour of man and feet.
You mean per mile or...
Per mile, per, you want an extra 20 feet?
Or 200 feet or not?
I mean, you could...
I mean, all the ground is supposed to go 10 feet this way and 10 feet down, all of it. So how do you...
Yeah, so you lose them and you, you have transformers, they break, they stop, and you have to replace them.
And the road's crying over.
I, I don't think we need to put it there, it's just extra length.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure if everybody...
In California, you already have them every two months, probably good. You don't have them that often.
I bet you they don't have 20-foot slack in them either. No, they don't.
I don't know, but you see the sidewalks go like this.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, I understand.
Ours won't be able to... Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I'm pretty clear too. But I think we're almost done.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm telling you, that, that one right there, from a construction standpoint, I'm sorry, it was unrealistic.
Okay, take it out!
So we grew it up.
I'm just trying to get you guys to think about tsunami building.
Well, I get that, but...
And earthquake.
It, it doesn't define anything.
So perhaps a more clear definition would be called for?
Well, I, I just...
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but it, I mean, so if you're gonna have a tsunami or an earthquake, it's gonna move, uh, we'll just say 100 miles of land, 20 feet by 20 feet, and you're gonna have 20 feet of, of a line every, we'll say mile, how are you gonna accommodate that extra 20 feet every mile? I mean, your, your expectation of, of power line, what are you gonna do with that extra 20 feet of your mile? And, and a construction process to that is gonna be astronomical. So, I mean, put in, put in bolts that you wrap 20 feet of, I mean, I don't know.
So I, I also, I see this, when we, we talk about watering, different things, and we have fish, fish drains and this, I like to point out to you that most of these, this, this section here on 124 is assuming that everybody has a similar pump, and there are shallow well pumps being used also. We do that all the time, shop, shop for like meters, you're not, a shallow well pump can be right next to your water tank. And your, and the, and the thing says put a meter between the, the intake and the, and the, uh, the pump and your treatment facilities. Well, that's, it's assuming that the similar pump, it's not assuming a shallow well pump can be fitted like that. So I was noticing that about fish drains.
Jamie, I think your last comment's on 178 about FEMA.
Yeah, and that is required. This language on 178 and 179 is FEMA-required language and you can't take it out.
Thank you for the most pictures.
And then the other thing, I never did get a definition from you guys, whether you want to increase the slope percentage to 16 as the crest or whatever, the, the trigger.
Oh, we talked about 12, but you had in there like 12 to 15 or 12 to 16, is that right?
I have 12 to 15 in one and then 16 is the other. And what most cities do is just 16, they don't do the other. So that's why I'm asking.
Is this a straight 16, not 12 to 15 or anything?
Right, it's just straight 16 requires...
And that's state standard or...
I think, I don't know. It's the DEQ standard, I know. It triggers a DEQ investigation.
You're looking for something on that from us and so...
Yeah, whether you think we should go along with everybody else or just keep ours the way it is? I mean, because, you know, so far we haven't had anybody killed on landslide.
But our mother earth is forever changing, I think.
16.
Is there anything else?
I'm looking, I'm going, I'm looking.
184 has any comments?
I'm on 199 right now.
184 has a comment?
184?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I miss it? Is it only part of you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's the 15, 16, is that right?
That was it, okay.
231? But we are not allowed, due to current code changes, state law changes, we are not able to treat manufactured homes and stick-built homes differently. They have to be treated exactly the same. So we can't, I don't think we can call out them and say they are not eligible for temporary occupancy permits.
So more stick-built homes are regular, do they have to put a trailer or something or something?
No, it's been wasted on me, so I tried them.
We have to treat it the same.
Right?
Okay.
Well, what about the, the strapping of a double-way manufacturing?
I'm just telling you what we were told.
I'm just asking...
I don't know, I don't know.
So, okay, I guess we need to read something.
Building, building standards are something different.
And that's done by the state.
And, yeah, and land use, we're talking about land use, we're not talking about building codes.
Right.
In land use, we can't treat them differently, we can't set them apart. Do you have any, seeing more, watching more? Um, you have not, I don't think, closed the public hearing. Did you want to ask anybody if they have anything else? I know Mr. Playcom had a question earlier, I don't know what I have.
Want to close the public hearing?
Not yet, hold on. You still have your question?
I can try to make a, great. I said I didn't know enough to ask questions, but I've learned so much about like 50-foot or 100-foot on this set match. You couldn't take rush out or anything like that. Is any consideration given to somebody like that? A year ago March, I purchased this property at the end of Ford Way, if anybody's familiar with that?
Before we go any further, Mr. Playcom, that is going to be the subject of the hearing and the violation is brought forward, so we will, the council, we don't want to, we don't...
I'll ask you.
Yeah, okay. Just wait on me, I'm very slow.
You need to ask if anybody else has anything else to add.
Anyone else have anything else before I close the public hearing? Public hearing closed at...
Yes.
That is what you're saying, 2042 and 840? 2042 or 840, so they see?
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for coming to share any thoughts with us, we really appreciate it.
Now you would probably want to consider a motion, continue further discussion at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, we covered a lot tonight, I would appreciate a motion to continue discussion. Although later.
Discussion? 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 I, I would like to have the synopsis of the things available for the next meeting that we do this, and just not table it, not have anything, I'd like to make sure we get the synopsis of, of the changes, suggested changes. If we have to have a public hearing notice, I think the, the thing about having, sending a note that they're available online, but if we have to send something out for this, I'd like to see a, like a five, six, or seven-page staff report, like suggested in the public hearing to, to talk about the changes that we, you know, the big, big things.
And I'm not sure that that's totally unreasonable because next Wednesday we're doing...
A budget.
Yeah. A budget meeting, right?
Yeah.
Every Wednesday thereafter?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, I just wanted discussion, just to mention those things before we go on.
No, that, that sounds reasonable, then the, we would have our second meeting, uh, meeting after that, what is it after that?
For the budget, you mean?
No, the budget meeting is next week.
Right, yeah.
The week, the week after that, two weeks from today.
But didn't we say that the budget meeting was going to continue every Wednesday thereafter?
Yeah.
The next time we're gonna discuss this thing is the next regular session.
Further session of council.
Session. And I, I wanna make sure that we're really prepared. I wanna, I want to be able to have the list of the amendments we're gonna make and the ups and downs so we can discuss them instead of...
Okay, that sounds good.
Jamie, are, are we asking something reasonable in asking for a summary of the major changes?
I'm putting together.
Because I'm, I'm putting in a lot of staff time.
It is, might take a lot of staff time.
That's what I'm afraid of.
But I think in due justice for our residents, it, as you pointed out, and as our, our resident had pointed out that was in the audience, these are very technical words, these are very technical forms, and not everybody can understand this, so by simply laying it out, it might ease them or give them further clarification of what they're seeking.
I'm in full agreement with that, I'm just worried about whether we're placing unreasonable burden.
Oh, I don't have a life anyway, pal.
Have what?
I don't have a life anyway.
I'm sorry, so, we just, whatever you might have had is gone now.
Is gone now.
Okay.
That's all right, it's budget year, time of year, that's, that happens every year.
I will say, I apologize, but I think in due justice...
Yes, I think you're right, I think you're right.
Because of this own tour of the citizens of New City.
Call the favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Do you have an executive session?
Oh, does he have to say when it was?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to actually say when the, when the next hearing will, will do.
That it's continued to...
The, the hearing is not, the hearing is closed.
Okay.
It's just consideration, the final consideration is continued to the next regular...
So, so we have our first reading, so the next meeting will have a second reading?
Correct.
With the, yeah.
And that will be at our normal June meeting, right?
And I'll have a synopsis done by then. If I get it done earlier, do you want to review it?
I would love it.
Or do you want me to put it online so that people can have access?
I would like to review.
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Do both, okay. 50, 50, 50.
So just to clarify this for the record, the motion was to have a second reading?
No, the motion was that the, the, the continue of this consideration was for next meeting, and that's where the second reading would be done, because we only did the first reading. And then we're gonna hopefully finish what we did, this will be an old business and a new business, or as a whole, a new business.
Are we then bound, because of what we're stating here, to have a second reading at the next meeting? I'm just concerned because there's a lot of things that, that are unsettled at this point.
No, that's fine, there's, that's fine.
Okay.
And what I will develop will also, like, is, and did you, you all got a copy of the script, right?
Yeah.
The script?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Like it points out in there, if you're not willing to just adopt the document as a whole, you have to have motions on each section.
Yeah, okay.
And so this will take care of that and make that easier to do.
I hope we have a second read by title only.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, please don't make me...
Let me think about that.
Yeah, we have to take a six minutes read if you're wrong. All right. Any reports?
No, but I, I would like to say I will not be able to be at the budget meeting next week, that's scholarship award night at the school, and that's my biggest event of the year. And it starts the same time that this one does.
Of course.
So I'm sorry, I have to make a choice, and I kinda have to be...
Yeah.
Um, we did not consider resolution series 2023, number three regarding deposits and fees. What happens is if you adopt ordinance 259, it repeals certain things, and one of the things it repeals happens to be an ordinance that, I mean, a resolution that also, or ordinance that also adopted fees. So that will go away.
Oh.
And so we needed the resolution for that. The resolution is prepared, we can consider it right after the other one.
So the, the new business, are any action needs to be done, I can put an old business next time.
I think the business, yeah.
All right. How was your report?
That was my report.
So we're, we're not gonna discuss the EQ requirements of the IGA road maintenance service by Lane County of the new business, or should we just table that for next week?
If we could, that would be great.
We already did that.
Did we, did we?
We did.
Did we vote on it? We did vote on it?
What was that?